Welcome everybody to the July meeting of the Village of Southampton, the Planning Commission. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so we're going to do a roll call. So Pamela Gil-Martin, is Pamela here? So Pamela is not with us yet. Laura?
No, I'm not here.
Yeah, okay. Eduardo?
Three times.
Christian?
President.
Okay, via Zoom, okay. Bob?
Here.
Okay. Michelangelo?
President.
Okay. Michael Anderson?
President.
Okay. Summer Sterling?
No.
No, not here, okay. And Mark Schiffer, I'm here. So we're gonna... The first item on the agenda is the review of our previous minutes. I don't know if you had a chance to look at them. They looked fine to me. There was an extensive presentation on the Trees and the Environmental Task Force. So I'd like to get a motion that we accept those minutes.
Motion.
Again.
Okay.
Second.
Second. All for it?
Aye.
Aye, okay, fine. So the motions are... The next item on the agenda tonight was the Sewer and Wastewater Committee, an update from Paul Travis, who is chairing it. And unfortunately, he's asked me to postpone this update until next month, until there's a little bit more progress on their on their creation of the Sewer Committee, of the Sewer District. So this will have it, it should be... It's rescheduled for the month of August. The next presentation that we had planned tonight, unfortunately, also got postponed. It was by Lynn Arthur, who was going to talk to us about the Community Choice Aggregation, which is a program under New York NYSERDA, as well as the Community Distributed Generation, CDG. Lynn is with the Town Green Sustainability Committee, and she's also an executive director at Peak Power of Long Island, which is a not-for-profit that provides communication services in the areas of renewable energy. And this Community Choice Aggregation Program and the CDG are programs from NYSERDA that allow communities that produce electricity to be able to give an option to the residents of that community to be able to elect, to participate in that program, and get a portion of their power from renewable source. So it's a very interesting program. It's a program, it's actually, here it's a program, it's a sort of federal program, it's done everywhere throughout the Union, and here it's managed by NYSERDA. The town is, although the village clearly does not have a solar farm, but the town is planning to build a solar farm on the landfill, as approximately either a four or five megawatt solar farm. And once this is done, at that point, we'll be able to get the benefit of getting some of that energy through renewable source and be participated in. And normally, if everything goes well, it should...
What about the methane gas that we're having problems with? What are they doing with that? They just burning it off, or they're gonna...
So that's a, that's a very, very good question. But it's going right now through the permitting process. And at the town, they have a very good engineer, Tom Hughton, who is reviewing this right now. So they are addressing and review, definitely, review this issue. So it's a, it's a good program, and we look forward to have Lynn Arthur next week to make a full presentation on this.
If I could, Mark, just for a second.
Yes.
This is also an opportunity for the municipality to make money. The town, these solar companies and their battery storage companies will lease the land, and that comes at a, at a cost that the town can then provide a discounted rate to the public. So with regard to the life of project, excuse me, the landfill project, residents stand to make, I think, a 10% discount on their electric bill. Not all residents, people would have to opt into it. But the more these programs and the more projects there are, the more opportunities there is for people to save money, including the town. So the village should be a part of that as well.
Yeah, that's a very good point. So in this case, the land, because it's a landfill, is being leased to a company. There was an RFP that was put out, I'm not sure. I think it was a company from Boston.
There wasn't an RFP put out.
Sorry?
There, there was an RFP put out.
Yes. I, I don't know if they selected the company yet, but, right. And then I think that after the 25-year lease, I believe the town will be able to be the owner or operate it.
So the town will have the option to be the owner through year seven. But it'll come at a cost, but it'll, it'll start to financially make sense for all parties at that point.
Right. It's, it's a very good program, and I know that Michael at the town is very involved in it. And it's, you know, it's right up where we should be.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay. So the, the next item on the agenda is an update from our village planner, Alex Wallach. Maybe Alex can... We, I asked Alex to maybe brief us a little bit on the... There was a request for proposal for, to review architectural and historical structures within the village. And I think we've got three proposals. One, I believe, from William Morachi, Palio West, and Preservation Studios. And I think the Board of Architectural Review, the ARB, is reviewing those proposals. I think Alex can take it on from here.
All right, that's correct. So the village has received three proposals that are now being evaluated by an evaluation committee, the Board of Architectural Review and Historic Preservation, with the idea is that if one of those firms is recommended, they will make a recommendation to the trustees to enter into a contract with one of those consultants to do a historic inventory survey of the village, focusing on areas outside of the existing historic districts, to see if there are existing resources there that may be eligible for potential expansion of the historic district. The village received a $10,000 grant from New York State to complete that work, to help offset the cost of that. That's a reimbursement grant. So the part of the ARB process is the first step in securing somebody to, to do that work, which will enable us to get reimbursed for part of those professional services. So we're hoping at one of the next meetings that committee will present their findings or recommendation to the ARB. And if the ARB agrees, they'll, they'll pass on that recommendation to the trustees, so we could get started on that project.
Okay. And is there, are there any plans to maybe review also the demolition permit requirements for historical structures, or to be, to see whether something, some items could be salvaged if there is a demolition permit issued?
So currently, all buildings above a certain age, and I think it's a rolling look back of about 75 years, are subject to go to a demolition committee of the ARB. There's currently some pending. And if the committee doesn't agree, or they think it needs further review, they will have the entire Board of Architectural Review and Historic Preservation evaluate those demolition requests. And then the board can either decide if it's appropriate to demolish, or if they would like to pursue landmark status for those buildings. And one of the recommendations, as part of the comprehensive plan, may be in the draft plan to have people required to show a replacement for historic structure. That's, sorry, not historic structure, but a, a structure of a certain age that's being demolished, so the board has an idea of what's going to be replacing it before they grant those permits.
Right. Yeah, I think that, and I think the demolition committee of the ARB, which I think is a committee of two, including Peter DeWitt, I think they've, they've done a very good job. They've really been watching and referring to the, to the full board. Anything that was doubtful, I think they, you know, it's, it's important to keep a close watch on that, you know, so we can preserve the character of the village. On the, on this other item that we had was the, the Building Department accepting the town licenses for its permits. Can you brief us?
Yeah, that I do not have an update on it, because that's not a, a building department issue. That would be, that would take pending, a change in code essentially. So I understand that there is a potential code that would have to be drafted for that to happen. So I believe the attorney's, the village attorney may be looking at that, and some of the other land use attorneys. But that would take a, a code change, as well as, I believe, a, an IMA with the town of Southampton to be executed.
Right. Yeah, I think inter, yeah, intermunicipality agreement should be signed. I think it would, would be, would be better for the village residents to be able to have contractors that are licensed by the town, such that if there is a complaint against that contractor, it goes to the town instead of going to the, having to go to Suffolk County.
What about mentioning county license, Suffolk County licenses?
Well, right now, the village only accepts county licenses. So if you have a complaint against a contractor, you have to go to the county Department of Consumer Protection or Labor Department to file that complaint. Whereas if, if they accept the licenses from home improvement contractors that are licensed by the town, then if you file a complaint, it gets reviewed right by somebody in the town, which is easier.
There's one thing I want to back up to, the architectural review and stuff. I think it should be specified that when the real estate people sell these properties, they should notify the people that these houses or these properties are in a historic district, and they could be governed what they could do to these properties. When I was on the board, they'd not tell them that. And they'd come in and want to demolish a historic structure, and we'd have to tell them no.
Yeah, well, that's part of, I believe, Alex, that it's part of the study. Right now, there is no designation per property. It's all per year, the year of construction, and...
If we had certain areas, Mark, that were definitely historic, in part a historic district, and they sell these properties and not tell the people they couldn't do what they wanted to do with them.
Right, that's a very good point. I think Alex should take note of that.
You're right, so there are four designated historic districts within the village, and any modifications within those districts require a certificate of appropriateness to be granted.
Right. Okay. Are there any other proposed regulations that you are trying to implement?
Well, something the, the commission should note is that the, the comprehensive plan is nearing its, its final draft form. The trustees, I believe, in the next couple of weeks may be scheduling a, the public hearing for that, probably sometime in August, at the end of the summer. Once the hearing for that has been scheduled, the draft plan is going to get referred to the Suffolk County Planning Commission for review, and it'll also get referred to, to this commission for you to review and make your comments to, to the trustees.
Okay, very good. All right, so we look forward to... So you think it will be submitted to the County Planning Commission? Is there a time, time frame, or...?
I think the idea is that it'll go before their, on their August meeting. So I think sometime in the next few weeks, probably mid-July, we'll be referring it to the Planning, the County Planning Commission, as well as the Village Planning Commission, as soon as the public hearing date is set by the trustees.
Okay, perfect. Sounds like, sounds like a good plan. Sounds like a good plan. Any other questions on this? Okay. So thanks a lot, Alex. So we're gonna move on the agenda.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
No problem.
So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, was to, some updates on the task forces. So on the Real Estate Task Force, we have some possible acquisition that are under review, and we will definitely give an update in August. At that point, we should also have been able to make some progress. I think Michael Anderson has been in touch with trustee Gina Artestah. So things are in the works there. On the Tree Environmental Task Force, I think we had a great presentation last time from Christian Pico. I don't know if Christian or Michael want to add anything?
Thank you, Mark. Just briefly, on June 21st, I presented to the Board of Trustees the findings for and on behalf of this commission. We had a walk-on resolution to form a tree board, which initially will comprise three members. One, a trustee liaison. Two, the village planner, Alex. And three, a planning commission member. This tree board will be overseeing a revision of chapter 101 of the Village Code for Trees, for public trees. And I think the idea is basically for Alex and for Michelangelo to work together to get this done. We got a lot of good work, and I took that opportunity with the trustees in the public meeting to thank Laura DeViti for all the contribution, including some of the historical data, as well as modeling, or models, Village Code models. That is the update. And as soon as this tree committee forms and gets going, once the trustee liaison over the parks and DPW is nominated, which should be next week, then we can start to get to work.
Okay, but there's, how many people on the tree, how many people on the tree board?
Initially, it'll be three. It can, it probably will be enlarged. There was some good recommendation from Mrs. Gil-Martin at the last session of Planning Commission, and it could be larger. We will code this into the chapter of the trees.
Because I think that, I think it's important to have expertise from the industry, that somebody...
For now, we are only going to be focusing, Mark, on legislation, which does not require any of that expertise. But after that, certainly, within the code, we should probably enlarge that board from three to five, including that idea that you have, which I think is excellent.
But it's, the industry would have more of a role if this legislation applied to the entire municipality. But if I'm not mistaken, this tree board would be focusing solely on the policy of the village, with how we look at our, our, our street skates and our, the trees in our right of way. So the industry may have less input here. Of course, the public is supposed to be a part of this process.
Is, is the goal still to get a Tree City designation? And if so, isn't one of the requirements that an arborist be a part of this?
So Laura, yes, it is. The objective, we need to have a tree ordinance, which is the last piece of the puzzle in place, encoded, voted in by a board of trustees to do that, to do that. As I said, in the code, we will enlarge the tree board to all the right specificity. For now, we just need to have three members working on this to make sure we pass this legislation. Within the legislation, there will be an enlarged tree board, including an arborist.
Okay. But the Tree City USA, are we... We should be close to being able to become a Tree City USA.
No.
Yeah.
I'd just like to remind you, here are four requirements. One is a budget requirement, which we passed. One is a proclamation, which we passed. A tree board is the third one, which we just passed on October, on June 21st. And the third one is a tree ordinance, which will take a lot of work between now and year end. We have to have it done before year end, so we can make this application, the deadline of which is December 31st.
Okay, fantastic.
Christian, can you tell us again, maybe I just missed, I didn't hear you. Who is actually on, going to represent the commission on that tree board?
It's open.
It's open? Well, should we make that, maybe make that decision tonight, as to maybe who, who would like to volunteer for the position?
Is it, is it designated or volunteer?
Well, I think that in this case, you know, either Michael or Christian, who has been working on it.
Or me.
Or you or Laura, if she wants to.
Hello, I'm here.
No, no, not Laura.
Well, I think Christian has done the bulk of all the work.
Oh, really?
And, yeah.
Well, on the legislation side...
That, from what I understand, he's done an awful lot of work.
Well, I've done a lot of work too, Michael.
Okay. Gentlemen, as I said earlier, Mrs. DeViti has done a lot of work on the legislation part, and has provided us with all the backbones, which I gave to Alex and Michelangelo. And she's done a lot of the work, and certainly must be part of this exercise.
All right, so do you want to... No, don't, don't.
No, I'm leaving. Excuse me.
The... So should we make a recommendation as to, to represent the Planning Commission?
If I can just make one suggestion, why don't we find out who the trustee liaison is going to be for parks and DPW?
Okay.
For that trustee to perhaps have a view of who he or she is going to want to work with to get this legislation passed, since that trustee would be the champion of that legislation.
Okay, that's a good point.
That's a good point. I, I'd second that.
I believe that may be trustee Gina Artestah.
That, right. It, it may be. I know she was having discussions this afternoon with the mayor, and it wasn't already, it wasn't completed yet. So this might be early to say, Alex.
Understood.
Right.
But the probabilities are pretty high.
Right. But I think that there is going to be a a meeting on the 14th for the Board of Trustees, where they will appoint the different... So should we wait until then?
Well, I mean, that's, that's a good idea, but I think we're putting the onus on Gina to make that selection on who, who she thinks she can deal with the best. I think it's for our board to suggest who should work with the trustee, as opposed to the other way around.
I agree. I, I...
I agree. You're right. It's clear that Michelangelo Lieberman will be, from a legislation and from a coding recommendation, working with Alex, is going to be for the Planning Commission, the pillar of the discussion.
And the, the only reason that we can say that is because I've written a couple of different versions of this for the town. Town decided not to pursue them due to, most likely, the way in which the leaf blower ban process went. But they may pursue it in the future. So we, we want to kind of take what I, I worked on with the town and see if it applies here.
So who should we assign to... Do you think we should assign Christian?
Either Christian or Michelangelo, I guess.
Well, it, it, yeah, I think, Michelangelo, if you feel comfortable, you know, taking the, taking the seat, taking the position, I think. And Christian, if that's what you're saying, would probably be the best person on the board to fill that seat.
Whoever, whoever is, takes that responsibility for and on behalf of the Planning Commission is going to rely on Michelangelo, working with Alex, to get this done. They're the two who are going to roll up their sleeves to get it done.
You won't necessarily need me to be on the tree board in order for me to participate in drafting a code. I can, you know what I mean?
Yeah, well, now I do.
We do need somebody on the Planning Commission who's willing and able to push all the trustees when it comes to the time of putting this through, which will include a public hearing, by the way, because it's going to be a piece of legislation. And as usual, public hearings are going to require good championships. So we need somebody strong there.
All right.
No, I think, I think Laura or Christian should be the one to do it, actually. They've, they've done the most work.
I would vote on Christian or Laura as well.
Yeah, so Laura, just to be clear, Laura has done a ton of work on the subject. And I, for and on behalf of the Planning Commission, thanked her for her work at the Board of Trustees meeting on June 21st. I just want to be clear on that, and thank her for that. Her term, if I'm not mistaken, is up on June 30th, 2022, i.e. a week ago. And one needs to know whether the mayor is going to renew it or not.
True, too.
Right.
Therefore, again, we would advise if we wanted to table to not...
Or you want, you want to table it, or you want to...
I think we should table it until we find out whether Laura is...
All right, so we'll make a motion to table the the selection of our member to represent the Planning Commission on the tree board until the August meeting, giving an opportunity for the, the trustees to either reappoint and so, the proper people, okay?
That's fine, that's good.
Good, everybody in favor?
Yeah, fine.
Aye.
Okay, great. Okay, great, thanks. So on the next item is the Urban Mobility Initiative Task Force. This one, we will we will, I'm planning to have somebody from the county to, to come from the Suffolk Planning Commission, and also their, some of their efforts that they are doing, to come present us. I don't think it's going to be in August, because we're going to have a big meeting in August, but maybe for the September meeting, we'll try to coordinate something. Maybe with Bob, Bob is on the, he's on that mobility committee. So we'll try to do a presentation for the September meeting. The next item on the agenda was a presentation by Kathy Sweeney, but she also asked us to postpone it. And it was about the continuing education requirements. There is a continuing education, education program that's going to be given by the Suffolk County Village Official Association. And it will be given on October 12th at the Riverhead Atlantis Facility. So everybody here is invited to participate. They should be sending an email. And I have attended many of those presentations, and it's a great way to meet all the board members, all the commissioners from all the villages in Suffolk County, and be able to compare notes. And they normally have great speakers. And you speak about, last time I was there, they were talking about implementing regulation concerning drones. So they are looking at regulations that are at the forefront of the, of the times. Okay. The next item on the, on the agenda, well, was update on village new developments. And I just wanted to touch briefly on the village election that we just had, which were, I think the elections were handled extremely well. And I'd like to thank Kathy Sweeney for that, who really, and also Charlene, Charlene, who really did a great job in managing and handling the elections. There were, the total number of ballots were 2,0745. There was the... There were, they had 840 people who voted in persons. And the official results were trustee Bill Manger got 658 votes. He got the most votes. The next one was Gina Artestah, who got 613 votes. And so they are, they both are now the trustees. Next was Joe McLaughlin, who got 431 votes. And I think on the behalf, on behalf of the Planning Commission, I would like to thank Joe McLaughlin for all the work that he did as a trustee. I think he was very active, very involved in all the management of the, the village. And last but not least, Kimberly Allen got 367 votes. The, we also had one, Barbara Wilson, who was actually running unchallenged, and she did get 676 votes. So the total, we, the total number of... So the total, we, the total number of registered voters in 2022 is 3,000, 3,169 voters. So, and we had 2745 ballots. It was a reasonably well-attended and well-attended election. There was some, we had approximately 284 absentee ballots. And our next village election is already next year, is going to be June 16th, 2023. And that's will be an election where, for the mayor. So right now, we have elections every, basically almost every year, which is something that's possibly needs to be reviewed.
Well, on that subject, weren't we contemplating as a commission, speaking to that point about maybe proposing a rule change that it's a little bit, every two years is.
Yes. So we, a, a letter was sent out to all of the trustees and the mayor to authorize the planning commission to review this, the election under terms. And in that letter, we indicated that unless there is any objection, we will proceed. So we are just, we just are giving an opportunity for the board of trustees to review the request. And if there is no objection, then we should review it.
When was that sent, that letter?
About a couple of weeks ago. A couple of weeks ago. I know that the town is also going through a very similar process. In the town, the, the council people are elected for four years. And the ma, and the supervisor is elected for two years. And they are looking, and the town council have two terms. And the supervisor has four terms. So they all are for eight years, but they are looking to change this also. So it's interesting that we are looking at the same, at similar issues. I think personally, an election every year is allowed for the village.
I think the town tried to change that once several years ago and didn't, didn't pass.
Right. So they are looking, yes, you're right. But we'll see. I, I think that for us, an election every year is, is a lot, but we'll see when we study that. The next item on the agenda is the public, any public comments or discussions. So at this meeting, unfortunately, this year, maybe everybody's at the beach. Unfortunately, we don't have members of the public, but I would like to encourage people to come to our, to the planning commission, voice their concerns, bring their ideas at the next time. So and then the next one, I mean, unless there is any other items of discussions.
Traffic.
Yeah, traffic, yeah, traffic. Well, I think that, let's, let's plan for September to really study. I know that you're absolutely right. It's, it's never been like this.
It's just that I don't even live on a main road. I live on a side street. And it's just pouring through my neighborhood. And left-hand turning hours is something that should be put in every single light in the village in order to make a left, and then you should go after.
No, but also.
I spoke to the chief, uh, chief, and I think she went to the county about talking about putting on. And she says there was no response from the county at all about left-hand turning hours.
Right. Well, I, I thought that Charlie McColloughs from the town was going to take a little bit more action on this. I mean, it's really ridiculous.
It's just, we got so much traffic coming through this village. I mean, just trying to make a left-hand turn. It's just, you know.
And, and everybody's trying to go through the side street?
Yes, definitely.
Do you think they're gonna, going through the state section?
Usually that happens if there's a problem on county road, then, you know, everything's backed up. So then we try to go on Hill Street and the side streets.
Hill Street is like a parking lot every day.
Hill Street, you go up there now, it's like a parking lot. Now, what if I had to come down? I had no problem coming into the village. But when I picked my grandchildren up and had to go back, I had to take the back way, all the back roads to get back. Otherwise, it'd be parked on Hill Street.
Right. I think that the, this electrical, this electric, little electric car that they have running in the village, and I would certainly encourage everybody to use it. The app is called Circuit. You can download the app on your phone.
It's called what, Mark?
Circuit.
Circuit?
Circuit. And, and you download the app on your phone, and they will pick you, they will pick you up at your house and drop you anywhere within the village. And it certainly alleviates the traffic. I have used them. It's really great.
I, to think our problem is, is not people in the village, it's people coming from the east, heading west.
No, no, you're right. But it's also, if you're able even to go to the beach, instead of driving to the beach, you take this little electric car or you go to, to, to do your shopping, you take the little electric car.
Well, my, my daughter got me on my bicycle, my grandchildren. And I hadn't been on a bicycle about 15 years. And we started taking the back roads, and I couldn't believe all the traffic that was on the back roads going to the beach.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. That's right.
It took me a little bit getting used to riding a bicycle. I hadn't ridden one in a while.
I mean, the, the number of the traffic at, I think last weekend at Rogers Beach, the, the parking, parking lot was full. There was no space in Rogers Beach for the, it's unbelievable. The amount of people this year is like.
You said Rogers Beach or Cooper's?
Oh, Cooper's Beach, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Cooper's Beach. Okay. So if there are any other matter to discuss, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second. So our next meeting is August 4th at 5:30. And we hope to see more members of the public attend. And I want to thank everybody for your participation, and we'll see you next month.